So what's our fire department? Chief Osgood?
Before, before we dig in, I want to make a couple of comments. From my perspective on this whole budgeting process. So, so first of all, I have felt something. This budget process that I have never felt throughout my involvement with the budgets and that, you know, happened in a couple of years before I became chief when, when Chief Gardner and I were, you know, working together on some of these things. Which is that the, the budget effort. This go around has been collaborative. And, and I'm, I'm speaking to the city clerk on that. I mean, there has been discussion, there has been information, there has been communication about where we are, why we're there. What we're needing to do to fix it and how we're going to make it better in the long term. And, and that, that's never happened before from my perspective and I don't know about the other departments and what they can say, but from my side, that type of communication prior to giving y'all the budget has never occurred. Um, as far as the cuts are concerned and Tiffany hit on it, I mean, we're kind of, at least I am. I mean, I don't, I don't want to put words in everybody's mouth, but I'm, I'm definitely trusting the process here. Um, unless we've cut our budgets by fifty percent, which nobody has. Then the first fifty percent of the year can be funded just like it's always funded and be spent just like it's always spent. Now, if we get to April and things aren't adjusted. Then those services have to stop. But, but, but with the tax revenue, you know, once the money's at the bank, we can spend it.
Well, we got to see how much is there. Thank you, sir.
So.
Well stated, Chief.
So, so I, I, I am definitely on board with the trust the process concept of let's, let's get to April. Uh, uh, you know, is the potential, are there unknowns? Of course there are. Nobody wanted to have to come in and cut their budgets. But together, for, like I said, for what I feel like is the first time. We're, we're working together to get through this and make things better for the city. And, and we're taking one on the chin now and, and it's hard and it's no fun, but. I think I could see how it's going to benefit us in the future and, and I, I, I think I can speak for the others when, when I say that. So, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there before we started diving into, to my budget so that y'all could see it from my perspective.
How is the morale in your department right now?
I mean.
I'm just curious with things as they are, the six months, you know?
I mean, I don't, I don't think we're at rock bottom. I don't know that we're at the highest we've ever been, but.
I know that there's discouraged from things that they've, you know.
Again, from, from. From my perspective, I've sat down with each one of my chefs and of course, I don't give them every single detail of everything that's going on in the conversation I have, but I've given them the general picture of exactly what I just said. Why we're here, what we're doing to fix it and how it's going to make things better for the future. So, so again, is it fun for them to sit here and hear, you know, that we're having to take the equipment out of the budget that we were planning on purchasing this year? No, that's not fun. But when you feed them the information and they understand the why behind it.
Right, and I know you're.
You, 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 you know, you hope that they.
Communicating.
They understand it and, and are willing to work with you until things get better and if they're not, then. That's the way the cookie crumbles now. I mean, as department heads, it's our job to sit here and fight for our guys, every single one of us. You know, so, so that's what we're trying to do in the midst of all of this.
Well, and I know there's been comments made by the council, several council members that have kind of gotten the morale low. And it's, you know, I want them to feel appreciated because the job they do is not easy, you know, I, it's not an easy job.
Well, and, and I'll take. I'll take this opportunity to throw something else on the table also. And, and this is not yet official and it probably won't be for a couple of months. I wasn't really planning on sharing it, but I think it's a good time to. Um, we had our ISO grading. I do not have the grading packet in hand that shows us our official score, but in talking with our ISO grader, now. Give a brief history here. So ISO is graded on a scale of one to a hundred. For every ten points on the one to a hundred scale, you gain one ISO score from a ten down to a one being the best. Uh, at our last grading, right after Chief Gardner came in, we, we were an ISO four. We got graded right as Chief Williams left, we actually dropped to a five. But that score was never published because we went through what they call their retrogression program where we basically came up with a plan of action of how we were going to fix things. And we saved our four and, and that was the number that was published. At this grading, it looks like we're going to gain thirteen points on the one to a hundred scale.
Doesn't like.
Which is for a department our size is to, to, in basically five years to go from dropping into the fifties. To being well into the seventies is incredible. So, we have made a ton of progress.
Absolutely.
Objectively. And that's, that's one of the few objective measures that we get in the fire department is that ISO score. So, so objectively, we have made huge strides and, and that's going to drop our ISO score to a three is, is what that means. And we're knocking on the doorstep of a two.
But that helps us as homeowners with homeowners insurance, right, it lowers.
That's not what Abby Stewart says.
Well, some.
He's not here to say it, so we can't go with that.
That's not what he says.
Some insurance companies use that information differently. Some, some have their own grading schedule. And some, some use the, the various various ISO scores, so it, it, they, you know.
It just varies.
It varies how, how that happens.
Here you pay whatever you can.
Well, well Nate, I wanted to, um, just make a comment and I'm glad that things are going really, really good. And I think since we've been here, I don't think any department has had to go without something that they needed. I mean, we've always done the best we can to make sure you guys still have everything you need it, but I also want to say too. It's easy for you to trust the process because you're being compensated separately in the sales tax increase. Uh, other departments, you know, you're one of the few that you, you have allocated to you, to your department.
But none of that money's included in here.
But you're still going to get additional money that you haven't thought that you, you weren't already getting. So, it's like, you know, that first one, four, four million is already being basically allocated and spent. So, everybody else is over here nervous they're being cut and they have to, um, they have to worry about the additional over the four million. Which we're hoping is still, I mean, we're hoping is.
Six, seven.
Yeah, we're hoping is way more than what we, um, have anticipated or whatever, but. I mean, it's, it's easier for you guys to, you know, trust the process because no matter what happens, no matter the outcome, y'all, you know, your department will be compensated.
Yeah, but, but again, that, that money is restricted and used to some extent. And, and what's, what's cut out of my budget here, that, that money doesn't, doesn't fix, at least not now. And, and, and the same arguments made for the police department. I mean, they, they know, they know that some of that's coming, but, but, you know, I mean, we have to deal in here now and that's what we're trying to do.
Does anybody have any questions about the cuts or anything?
I used to say lot of the cuts, but I didn't say that.
Um, I want to go back, I should have asked this question. How, Ms. Alex, how did we do traveling training this year? I know in the past, we've always taught, uh, we would only, and I don't, I think me and Tiffany talked about this at one time. I, we would only get trained if it was to maintain a certificate, but in the past, we've always went here, there and done kind of whatever we needed to do. So how have, have we done that this time since we're having to trim the fat and tighten everything down?
We haven't been approving it Nate, if you remember Nate, everybody's just.
Right, because they, they had the money to do it, but see now we tightened everything down. I'm just wondering, is that some of the cuts that was?
Yes, sir, we're, we asked the departments to only. Put in their training line for, to go for trains if it's part of a certification that's required for them to do their job.
And then if they want anything else, we can look at that later down the road.
That's right.
Uh, Chief, is that, I'm assuming that's what you did, get all yours certified? Keep all your certifications?
Well, for half of us.
For the half, sure, sure.
You're going to have to do a freeze if, if things aren't different in April.
See, every police officer has to have forty-four hours.
Right.
I'm sorry, twelve hours of certification or recert to keep their certification.
Yeah.
Executive level has to have twenty hours.
So did you do that, or did you cut that in half for the six months? Like when you made your cuts, did you base that price off of the? The, the training at half?
For the most part, our travel training was based on the new hires that we have. Um, to, to make sure we have enough money in there to, to put somebody through the police academy. Um, so you're looking at almost five thousand dollars ahead to go to the police academy. We've got to have nine, or right now seven. So, that's thirty-five thousand. If we get all seven, probably not likely to get all seven.
Right.
But, um. So we, we just, we drop it down to what we thought we could live with for the first six months.
Okay, Nate, did you do the same?
Yeah, I mean, you, you, it's hard to estimate some of those costs, so you try to leave a little cushion in there, make sure you cover it, but yes, we.
How much cushion did you leave?
I cut it by fifty percent.
So, but. How much?
Yeah, okay, alright.
I'm good.
Y'all go fire?
Plan? Lang, Mike Whitson?
So, biggest thing you had to do in the first one, as far as cuts go?
A lot of the planning budget really is the departments, the other departments. It's not happening yet. A lot of the business in that department. Were placed in there in case we need them, especially had some large project coming up, like a real large project or. You wanted to relocate some zoning or something like that for a publication, some expenses for that. And we've seen that a lot of that was not used because you have to have it on the budget in order to have a PO. You don't use it, it's still sitting there. We went back and looked at the last for a couple of years. And we were able to cover all we could a little bit if we needed. We covered currently out of code department. We just got bigger budget. But. We looking at, we are able to just cover that for a week.
Okay. Now, I don't see any big ticket items as far as percentage. Cut.
Even the subscription, that, a lot of that is basically just one of the main departments that that's, that's where they're able to give us that amount. Gives us access to a lot of trade opportunities and training. Not just we're just finding a department, finding information. It'll say on order death, it'll send a video to everybody.
Do you think it catches y'all's eyes on the plan?
I might even, those are a good job, I don't have any.
Pretty good, huh?
Mike, still up for building services department? Does anyone have any questions for Mike?
No, I don't have any questions.
No.
I saw, I mean, you sent, you sent this out at twelve thirty, I mean, I looked at it the next day.
Well, I did, I have.
I was awake.
No, nothing, nothing stands out. She sent it for, uh, eight thirty, well Friday morning.
Friday morning and midnight.
Was it Friday and?
At midnight.
Midnight Friday?
Friday morning.
Friday morning, so.
Do you ever sleep, Alex? And thank you, this is the most well organized budget.
Uh, definitely.
So municipal court, thank you, Lauren, I appreciate that.
It is very organized.
She's not going to accept it, but thank you.
No, she's not, she did say thank you.
Um, we've asked the A W not to be here because her children are sick.
Sure.
With that virus. So, she's only been cut a hundred and fifty dollars and that was for the court, court translator expense. The reason they were cut is it's included in her budget every year and that's in case somebody comes in and doesn't speak English, we need to get a translator.
Sure.
However, she hasn't spent the money in two years. So that was a cut she agreed that, that, and that's her only cut, um, to be honest. Everything else is either mission critical for her or mission essential, but she did go back and look. Are there any questions on the court?
No stuff they have skewed every year.
Yes, sir. And you notice the averages are the same throughout the last three years as they were last year. Animal shelter? Ms. Stephanie?
Um. Basically, um, I've only been installed for three and a half months, um, so. Office and operating supplies that includes, um, everything from different veterinary vaccinations, um. Routine office supplies, um, so we did cut that. I've been pretty thrifty on that. Um, the travel and training conference expense, um, that's because we don't have a, um, C E team currently, so that's for, um, two days training in Birmingham. That'll be September fifteenth, sixteenth, that's two people, that's travel and a couple launches both days.
Sorry to interrupt you, is that, uh, something pertaining to the, um, somebody that we have to analyze?
Yes, that's required.
That's what I was hoping we're getting, somebody.
Um, janitorial supplies went up a little bit, um. And I just think it's just across, just across the board and we are using a little more. Of those chemicals to try to keep the facility cleaner. I don't know if anybody's visited recently, but we are trying to keep it at a higher standard. The due subscription, that's the certification issued by the veterinary board out of Montgomery. Um, the spay neuter, it's about the same. I've reached out to several vets. There is sort of a calamity across the board with this. We have Alabama spay neuter in Birmingham, they had six vets, they're down to two. Um, they're backed up until, um, January, February. So I started reaching out to local vets and I've expanded that network so I'm moving animals through. Um, so that they're more adoptable. If they're spayed or neutered, people tend to gravitate toward those animals and we can move them up quickly. Um, as Alex said previously, we did not have any sort of transportation, um, we do now, so those are new expenses.
What day would you get?
Or pickup truck? The building, uh, repair and maintenance, uh, that's to cover kennel gate repair. Um, the interior kennel gates are absolutely a nightmare. There are several of them that have corroded at the soldering joints at the bottom. So when you push them open, um, they have to scrape and are leaving marks on the floor. They are being held together with pieces of chain, um, spring clips, um, dog collars, whatever we can find.
Didn't you get something to fix kennels?
It was something outside, wasn't it?
I mean, with that compensation.
It was outside, wasn't it?
It was outside.
I just remember I fixed a kennel or something.
And then, uh, there's an exterior side that we're looking at reconfiguring. And other than that, uh, the second part, the data processing, we don't have Wi-Fi, so we're trying to do that so I can.
You've got to have Wi-Fi.
Use the scanner and do some other things.
That's not right.
So.
Like that, not many additions to what Michigan River, like that, so.
Yeah.
And the, the, um, department implemented this year, so then it's not going to stay long.
Well, my other issue, and I know we'll revisit this in, in April, but I do have a couple staff members that are just rock solid and I really respect them. And at my age, you know, they're sort of starting to feel like family, like daughters or whatever. Um, one of them in particular is, um, really gifted and I'm concerned she may move on because of, you know, the low wage. Um, we are one person short, so when somebody calls off like that's happened this past week, so I'm, you know, that pushes me. Or I have to bring in other people, so that increases obviously overtime or whatever, but, um, you know, I would like to.
That's how we're always.
Revisit and, and, and push that and I know the mayor's been working on it. We've got.
Who's the plan in front of us?
Yes, yeah.
So you're taking like, what, ten hours an hour or something?
Ten thirty-eight is the starting page. It's just, uh, on the ceiling.
Yeah.
The top line of the plan.
It's already, you don't want to.
Yeah.
That's already been presented, we got the numbers, so obviously we're on the plan there. I guess it'll be addressed.
Well, we can look and see where it actually comes from, go, go somewhere else.
I think.
That's that hundred and sixty that James talked about.
I know, and I, and I know I keep saying this and y'all probably tired of me saying it, but I really think hers need to be pushed up that.
It was number one.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about even if it's separate. I hate to say it, like. Because the week we need to lose, we were already short staffed out there.
Yeah, you got people waiting, you know, that are going to be.
I thought we fixed that.
No, no mayor.
That's actually, what, eleven fifteen, start now?
Now, we, we did fix it when they were making ten.
Yeah, we did fix it, uh.
Yeah, but nobody's holding the weed for ten dollars anymore, I remember that.
Yeah, I remember.
Hold it for what, eleven, twelve?
It's eleven.
Eleven is a change.
But it's not ten, I remember ten.
Yeah, they're, they're number one anyways. Thank you for that, jumping in, I understand.
Good job, Ms. Stephanie.
Thank you, Nate.
You and Al?
Cassie and Mayor?
That's what it's been, take it out and jump out and let it go.
The biggest things that we did on our costs is probably going to be the other professional fees. Um, of course, we don't have the chainless key expense that we budgeted for last year. And we were able to go ahead and take care of the Silicon Garden Recreation and Aquatic Center. Fees associated that seventy-five thousand this fiscal year, so it's not an expense we had to anticipate. Um, other than that, just trying to make sure we have enough to cover for those incentives that we have to pay with the next cycle.
Department inventory expense was cut all the way from eleven ninety? What was that?
We were asking for some polycominants and a table and it's not critical in this moment, so we can, we can wait.
I got a question. Why did the legal fees expense go up significantly? Sorry, can't talk today.
So, legal fees last year, um, what, what we were approved for was the thirty-seven thirty fifty. And we've already had to make two different budget amendments to put money in that line. Um, to cover legal expenses for our attorneys that go through different personnel issues and things of that nature. Um, the Emerson, uh, grievance is now moved on to a different, different type of thing, so.
So could we not cut that some then?
The, the legal fees would be accounting for your contract for the CD attorney. It counts for the, um.
Brian Cash as well, right?
So did Winn's fee go up?
Winn's fee did not go up.
Winn's fee did not go up.
The additional, the additional.
Are we planning to sue him?
You got a hag in case you do, in case you have another Emerson case or.
Could we, I mean, in case we get sued, we need to make sure we have money available. Um.
So the other professional fee, um, I'm sorry, the legal fees would have been putting in the legal expenses that we did end up paying out this year. It's making sure that there's ten thousand in there for that.
So are we planning to get sued? I mean, I just, I don't understand.
You don't know why it's so high?
Yeah, why it's so high, I still don't.
It's still the three-year average of the last three years. Yes, the budget you guys cut, they spend it, it's still a three-year average.
One of those bending over.
The, uh, and then they got to take money from another line that is their budget to find the money to pay the bills for the attorneys that we're all referring to. Um, normally without knowledge of the city clerk and/or the E N L department. Cause we get invoices and then I have to send them to you guys, the council, to say, did you do this or not, because I'm unaware.
Every time my attorney picks up the call, we're getting home, we're getting.
Every time you pick up the phone to call an attorney, we get charged.
That's why we got the street on that process.
So is Winn contacted and then the other, you know, first and then the other? Not with Brian Cash, I mean, that's a totally separate thing. I'm talking about with like labor issues and stuff, does Winn contact you first or is it Robbie?
I can answer that. We used to contact Winn and then we're paying Winn, then Winn contacts Robbie because she's, he's the labor attorney and she is. So we're paying two attorneys. Now we, in this last case we had, um, we went directly to Robbie. Because there's no sense of paying two attorneys, one to be the middle name. Um, so yes, that expense has been cut.
But are we supposed to, so isn't the point of having a city attorney is to let him, um, contact other attorneys for, isn't that how it's supposed to be? I know, but I'm saying, when he's the city attorney.
Yeah, but he doesn't specialize.
He doesn't do life.
He had to call Robbie, Robbie makes that call.
So now we're paying two people.
Winn, do you have a comment?
At the end of the day, ain't that the mayor's decision?
It is.
Thank you.
But we're paying, we're, we're responsible for the money for it, that, that's the place. Winn, you got something?
Yeah, uh. What Alex said is, is true, uh. We wound up with the legal expenses because of the number of times we've been sued and have you gone before the civil service board. For, uh, grievances and other things. Perhaps those will slow down, so some of those issues will come up. Uh, and as far as I'm concerned, uh. If you go back through the years that I've been city attorney, I haven't charged for everything I've done and I don't charge for a phone call every time I make one. Anybody I do, when I'm doing some work, uh, I do charge. And, uh, in addition, this year, uh, I'm going to pay. And if you get Alex, I don't know how much, it's about two thousand dollars to go to the league municipalities meeting, something like that, twenty-five hundred maybe. And the judges have always gone and I've always gone and the city's always paid for it. I'm going this year because I think it's important, but I'm not going to ask the city to pay for that. So that's, that's how I am trying to make my fees and costs less than they were in the past.
Got one more question on the data processing increase, was that, what stuff we just bought?
That is the.
And would that thirty-six hundred be in the same case?
That would be to get one additional spare, uh, time clock just to have on, onboard. The, we know that there's, there's only really one location that has multiple people talking in kind of at the same time. So, we're, we're gauging to see if we're going to have to put in a second clock at the street department versus.
How's that going to affect the animal shelter? They don't even have Wi-Fi available.
There'll be a network connection, it'll be our line.
Okay.
Miss Coby? That's all I have for E N L, anybody else, I'm good.
Building maintenance, this pretty much belongs to Ben Baker, the custodian. The only interest he had was the normal for salaries.
Does he need help, like a bit? I mean, I know we don't have the money right now and I mean, I'm worried that we.
He probably is a part-time guy, I'm sure.
Yeah.
He was on your additional request.
Could we get inmates to come help?
That comes from the street department, but not to help them.
They, they don't, we didn't have ditches.
Oh, I know, but I just was wondering if they could help them some with some of the maintenance. They could help with Johnny Billings, uh, wouldn't it?
Are we still limited on the personnel bring, the, the prisoners we can get? I know they didn't, used to, we'd give whatever we wanted, but it's different now. Does that the, the city board?
Can't transport more than three if we don't have the, the vehicles.
Can say three more?
Hmm. Yeah. When you're looking at that, if we get, you know, something, trying to bring, like y'all's explorers got third rooms?
Mike, you go pick up a prisoner for it.
Y'all have a van, Kelly.
We, look at, look at something and take it to your vehicle, we can address that if we need to.
Alright, administrative finance? Yes, our pay did go up, the regular pay, but that's because we have to continue to pay people that are no longer here. Um, we have one we're still paying, um, that's opted to retire. However, I have two that have resigned. Um, and they will be resigning on August thirty-first. So, the numbers are not up to date for administrative finance because we changed one number, we were going to have to change everybody's. Um, so we're going to be short four and man forty-four point four four percent. So, um, our time in the map has gone up due to lack of manpower. And it will go up until we're staffed, um, as the council and mayor are aware.
And we need to address, when we do, the pay plan for your office as well because comparable to surrounding banks and stuff, I'm, I'm worried about some of those positions getting filled.
I've checked with the banks, so I'm not sure which banks you're referring to. I've checked with the banks, so I'm not sure which bank's yours or anything, um, but the banks.
There's, there's one position, yeah. There's, there's, I, you know, there was concern.
Spit it out.
There was a little concern about the.
Come on, baby.
There was, there was some low wages, when I asked you what the starting pay was for those positions and somebody from a bank, I sent it to them, they were like, wow, that's all their, you know, it was kinda shocking to them.
Publics is hired.
Yeah, publics is hired, that's why I said.
It is what it is, but publics is bigger than.
I mean, and this is dealing with the taxpayers' money, so, I mean, I think we may need to address that a little bit too.
Being addressed.
Um, you'll notice a lot of our stuff, they go down, like I said, we took initial cuts from the beginning. Incentives are probably gonna be a lower with what's coming to the city, um, but the revenue will take care of that.
I was just concerned, cause publics and McDonald's are both hired, then one of those starting pays, so.
Correct.
People make us aware of that daily almost.
Yes, they do. Property insurance, you'll notice a significant increase in the auto liability insurance, you'll notice a significant increase in the lines. The reason for that is when I had my initial meeting with the insurance company. We reviewed all our property inventory, which I did get with Ed Ford, the streets, the police and the fire department. There was several pieces of equipment that needed to be added to our insurance inventory in case something happened, so that increased our cost.
Just more.
A lot more equipment, newer vehicles. And adding vehicles.
Didn't you tell these board used to donate vehicles or something to, like, when they got new vehicles, Ashton?
That's why I pulled my time.
Didn't you tell these board used to donate their vehicles?
They have, they have a board.
Yeah.
Not every time, they have.
I'll put, I'll contact you.
Someone will.
Oh.
Are there any questions on the administrative finance?
No.
Well, it's not one o'clock.
I, they were rolling, let's go.
The people aren't here, they're running.
We got everybody here, I think, stretching.
Uh.
Ms. Grace?
Grace is here, Chambers here, Steve is here.
I said libraries first, so.
We have the library, field service.
Picky farmer library, she was cut ten thousand dollars, however, her cut is actually gonna be twenty thousand, not through us. Any cut we make to the library, the state cuts up to fifteen thousand. Uh, mayor, we gotta get our books. So can we hold on for a second?
Sure.
Back in a minute.
Bathroom break?
You gotta go.
I gotta go. I'll have a drink of water to stay awake and.
Drinking water to stay awake.
Department head, y'all can leave as the mayor says, y'all will do it.
Mayor Nate said so.
In eight years.
Oh shit, I know, we just didn't say that.
Quit, because I would, would you not, Ashton? I would be out.